All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Nisswa Planning Commission Board of Adjustment for Tuesday, July 9th. Roll call, please.
Yes, he's on.
Daniel Mendel.
Sean Weldon.
Josh Young.
Gary Harris.
Avery.
Jenny Max, Bethany Soderland.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Being non-entertainer motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, next to approve the meeting minutes for June 4th, 2024, and we do have some adjustments. Adjustments to the staff present, and specifically, we wanted to note that Bethany Soderland noted that she had submitted her resignation with the city. Uh, she noted it has been an honor and privilege to work with the city of Nisswa. Max expressed her thanks to Bethany, noting she had been a wonderful employee and colleague, and we wish her all the best, and I think we all agree with that sentiment, so we'll add that to the official minutes.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Hearing non-entertainer motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item is an open forum. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to speak towards something not on the agenda this evening? Okay. Moving on to public hearings, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, first up, zoning map amendment application 013-24 to rezone parcels 28230531 and 28230517 from urban residential zoning district to highway business zoning district. The subject property is located at Hole-in-the-Day Drive, Polk's Road, and State Highway 371. PID 28230531, 28230517, applicant Chris Close, owner Nisswa COU LLC. Is the applicant present here? You're not the applicant? Who are you?
I'm a resident of a property adjoining the proposed rezone.
So, uh, I'll have you sit. We're, we're gonna have the applicant come forward first, and then you'll have your opportunity after that, sorry. Yep. Yeah. Whichever you want. Okay.
Uh, in the rezoning of the property to urban or commercial zoning.
Yep, thank you. Bethany, your separate court.
Anything else for me?
Uh, you stay there.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Young. Um, parcels 28230531 and 28230517 are being proposed to be rezoned from urban residential to highway business. Um, as you can see in the staff report, I've included the findings of fact and the, um, items that our ordinance requires you to, uh, consider when approving or denying a rezone. Uh, the staff recommendation is with its proximity to establish commercial properties to the north and east, along with the future land use map. Um, you can see that on the comprehensive plan, page 35, clearly showing that proposed parcels to be included in the desired highway commercial area. Staff recommends approving the zoning map amendment request. In keeping with the current commercial zoning along State Highway 371, the request lends itself to be consistent with those adjacent properties and the highway business district. So once again, this is one of the only applications where staff recommendation actually is asked and is required. Um, and staff does recommend that, um, the properties be rezoned. As proposed.
Chris, do you want us to give us a brief overview of, uh, the reason why you're here?
Uh, well, you know, just basically Stuart looking long-term, seeing what all the surrounding properties are zoned. Um, with the property being on the market for sale, uh, in his determination, commercial zoning is the most conducive for that area, makes the most sense. Now, I will say, as everybody's aware, he's a, a, a adjacent property owner very nearby, so his desire is not to be masochistic. Um, he doesn't have any direct immediate plans. I would say he'd rather be transparent upfront and have the zoning, rather than zoning on the spot as you have a user, having it zoned so that it's conducive of what's already around that area is, is what he's directed to me.
Okay. Uh, I'll give the public the opportunity to make a public comment. Uh, you'll come to the desk, state your name and address, and then you're given five minutes.
Hold on, wait a minute. Thank you. My name is Greg Hames, and I'm a spokesperson for a number of the residents on Old Government Trail, Hole-in-the-Day Drive, and other properties that adjoin the proposed rezoned areas there. Uh, we've got a number of concerns and questions about that. One of them is that we look at that property today, it's been zoned as residential for a long time. Um, our concerns are many, but we do have a few questions. Exactly what is highway business zoning? Are there different levels of business zoning? And if so, is the highway business zoning at the top of the level? Can they put anything in there that would satisfy their needs as a commercial business? You know, can a quick trip go in there? Or is it, you know, restricted as to what highway business zoning is? Uh, what is the city of Nisswa's plan for future use of this property? It's our understanding that they have an interest, at least in the northern parcel, possibly even have a, a, a bid in place contingent on the rezoning. If that's the case, can the city explain to us what the plans are for that property, if there is in fact an interest? What studies have been done around the traffic concerns? As we know, that intersection of County Road 77, 13 on the other side, and 371 is a major concern of ours. There have been traffic deaths there as recently in the last few months. So we're wondering what the MinDOT's input to that would be in terms of increased traffic with new commercial zoning possibility going into place all the way down to Polk Road. Uh, if there's talk of a stoplight being introduced into the area, what does that look like? There's talk about a baggage road coming out of South Hazelwood Drive that adjoins that property. Uh, it's a fairly significant wetlands in that property, which a number of our properties have on it. The maps that we've looked at, in our opinion, greatly undersized the actual acreage of that wetland. Our question is, has the Minnesota DNR been contacted and potentially even the MPCA? Terms of the impact of a commercial zoning construction development would be on that wetlands. Can there be a discussion about a possible buffer zone between the lake properties and the potential commercial properties that would be developed there? If so, who would make that decision, uh, to look and introduce a buffer zone between the residents and that area? Uh, looking at the two parcels, the north parcel has mostly been cleared out. It used to be what we knew was the flea market. There was a landing strip there at one time. So that area seems like it would be more prone to a commercial development. The southern parcel is pretty heavily wooded. Stuart carved out, where's, Stuart has carved out some hunting paths in there. So that is the parcel that's mainly of our concern as the residents that have joined that, looking at potential devaluation of our property values and the impact, and one of the maps showed it, the, the one area actually comes within a thousand feet of the lake, so looking at that, what that would be. Another question we had was if it is rezoned, would the city demand a planned unit development, a PUD process for any future developments going in there? Would that PUD be a requirement of rezoning, or is that just a nice to have? We're not sure, so. Those are some of our concerns, safety, the impact on the property values for the existing lake residents along Old Government Trail, Hole-in-the-Day Drive, and there's other, the Anderson folks have property that adjoins that, that as I said, a, a great deal of that wetlands uh, impacts on their property as well. Thank you for your time and consideration. If you have any questions, as you see, we've got a number of our residents here that are, uh, willing to share our concerns and questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Right here and now, I'll close public comments. And Chris, if you wanna come back up, you can, you can sit at the chair or whatever you would prefer. Before we start, Bethany, do you wanna address any of the questions that were raised?
There was an awful lot there.
Yeah.
So, um, if you wanna email those to me, I'd be happy to get a stab at that, um, but I can answer just a few items. Uh, when considering a rezone, the city cannot determine, or we cannot base our decision for that rezone on a potential project. And so the rezone is based on the criteria set forth in the ordinance, and there are, it's in the staff report. Um, you have to consider all of these different points. It's the preservation of natural sensitive areas, like the wetlands that you talked about, and, and what is gonna happen with those. Um, it also talks about, um, present ownership and development, the, uh, soil types, topographic concern or characteristics, vegetative cover, uh, in-water physical characteristics, recreational use of surface, and the list goes on. And so there's a lot of criteria that need to be met. Um, it is in there. Um, if you want me to read off everything, I'd be happy to do that. Um, other than that, um, so we can't really consider what may. It's just, we'd have to allow for whatever use is allowed in the highway business. For the city of Nisswa, the highway business, um, I can read it right here. The highway business district allows and encourages commercial development that provides services and shopping facilities adjacent to trunk highway 371. The city should encourage open space design principles for commercial projects within this district. So what that means is that our impervious for that area is about 50%, which is significantly lower um, than central business district, which is at 90%. So usually, commercial properties, they have stormwater features, they have other things that allow them to, to develop at that rate. Um, so for that area, it is 50%, so that's a, a, a good feature that allows for a lot more green space in that development than traditional, um, commercial areas. Um, trying to think of the other, uh, with the wetlands, the wetlands are subject to the Wetland Conservation Act, so those would need to meet all the requirements that the state sets forth with that. So you can't impact them, in other words.
Yes, the DNR, if one of those, that the DNR was not contacted yet.
The DNR was notified of this, that it was coming up. Um, there is a slight little bit, as you mentioned, in that bottom southwest corner um, that does lie within shoreline, so that area would be subject to shoreline rules of the state of Minnesota as well. So regardless if those are commercial or not, those are still subject to those rules. I have not received a response from the DNR.
It's pretty common for them not to comment.
Mm-hmm.
Until there's something specific for the property.
Correct. Right.
That will trigger them.
Yep, a lot of those questions that you did pose are specific to projects. Um, so we can't really talk about what they, you know, what may be proposed, who might buy it in 20 years. So it's, it's not just about what may happen now, it's what would happen in 50 years. If we rezone this, if it does change, um, what could happen in 50 years? And so we need to do that. Um, the deciding factor, as far as the staff recommendation, was the fact that our comprehensive plan clearly, clearly shows that those parcels should be commercial.
Is there consideration, as I said, splitting the two parcels to make the northern one commercial and leaving the southern as residential? Chris, that might be more up to you, I guess.
Um, I guess it, well, it hasn't been, uh, addressed, you know, the desire was both. I would say some of that being the southern parcel is right where there's an intersection, which, I mean, we don't know the future, and there, you know, there could be a stoplight there someday, potentially, but so I think, you know, just looking what's, as I said earlier, what's zoned near, in the adjacent properties. Um, Stuart's desire is to have it all commercial, but again, and I think any developer and even the city's development, they're gonna be looking at the overall plan. You know, this is a deep property, it goes far back. Most users, all the, you know, the commercial users are gonna be utilizing the highway frontage, you got 50% impervious. So that helps in terms of tree coverage and things like that, but my, my experience with Nisswa is it's pro-business, but very much making sure you're taking care of the integrity of the area and how things look. It's much tougher to develop in Nisswa than I would say if you want, like Baxter's 88% in, in impervious surface, so. Those are just some thoughts, I mean. Wonder if, yeah.
Yeah, can you come forward and state your name, please? Thank you.
My name is Jeannie Foss, and I live on Old Government Trail. Um, on your listing previously before Chris, or before Stuart Mills bought it, it did show that the entrance was zoned as commi- commercial, um, highway business, just right at the entrance. So it already showed this cutout being zoned highway business, and then it showed the woodlands behind it being zoned residential. When the current listing went up, that had changed. And I don't believe there was ever a meeting that had that changed, um, zoning. So their original listing here does show that that Polk entryway, where the stoplight would be, was already zoned highway business. And they show the remaining acres are, are zoned um, as open space, and then the F is zoned as urban residential, and this was the previous owner that sold that property. The current listing shows it completely different. So I wanted to know if you guys have on record how this was listed, and when I was looking at purchasing it, before, um, Stuart Mills bought it, um, this is how it was zoned and carved out. So that's why I wanna know if there's a difference in how that came about.
I personally can't speak to what it was zoned. Um, I believe it's been zoned this, what is shown there.
Those were, so the American National Bank owned it, and they wanted to show ideas or concepts. So those were conceptual zoning, so it wasn't the actual zoning, it was a concept of someone came through and wanted to develop it, their ideas to help, and I think they did a good job of it, you know, to show ideas for people of here's what could be done. Um, but ultimately, whatever the zoning is, is what the zoning is, so the zoning.
I just wanted to have that clarified, because that's how that was listed, when it was listed for sale, but it's never, okay.
What's shown here is what occurred.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, could I provide some context as far as the MinDOT plan?
Yes.
Um, as everyone can see by these large maps against the back wall, uh, MinDOT has been engaging in a very extensive corridor study from Baxter, the Baxter city limits all the way through, um, to Nisswa up to, uh, the stoplight at County Road 18. So the, the right set of plans here is the northern segment, and you can come up after the meeting if you'd like, um, to, to look at that. They're, they're up anytime if you wanna stop in another time and take a look at them. Um, but they have been very, um, intentional to engage the city about future planning needs. And so you will see that there's some design ideas that they're working through to say, how can we, um, make sure that we're meeting current needs and also planning for the future? Uh, so for example, that southernmost intersection by Timberwood, Timberwood Church does not currently show a stoplight, however, because we don't know what might develop in the future, they know that that potentially could be coming, so we wanna make sure we're investing the right infrastructure plans now to allow for growth, if that makes sense to do so. So just know that that is here for you. Um, they will be engaging the public and the city council further this fall on more specific conversations about these plans, but they're certainly, um, taking their time to go through that and, um, make sure that everyone's has the opportunity to provide your input and feedback on that planning, so just wanted to, to mention that, it's available. Thank you.
Can Jenny, can you, and, um, can you comment on if the, if the city of Nisswa has any plans to purchase?
Certainly can. Um, currently, the city has, um, a purchase agreement in place, uh, with Stuart Mills on a portion of this property that is for sale. Uh, we are going through a due diligence period right now, it's very extensive, there's a lot of environmental studies that need to be completed, archaeological studies, et cetera, um, before that will be completed. Um, expected to finalize that process this fall, and then determine if all of that works, then we move towards the, um, bonding process to issue a bond to, to pay for that purchase. Uh, from the city's perspective, we are looking at some future potential needs, uh, for additional facilities, um, specifically public safety facilities, um, at that intersection area would be much more efficient than having some of the facilities downtown as they're located now. Um, we've been talking about a city water system, is that, will that come to fruition or not? We just wanna make sure that we have, um, the opportunity to um, provide the right infrastructure for the growth of the community if and when it's needed. Um, so council members on, if you have any other additional feedback, but that's kind of the high-level overview at this point.
I think you nailed it. Essentially, we're just trying to be as forward-looking as possible in respects to what the needs are for the city. I think you all have witnessed tremendous growth and demand for the properties in this area. Uh, when we look, we look back 10, 15, 20 years of what the city sewer system has done for this community now, we look at that same concept for the city water, exuberant cost, albeit, we are still trying to be as diligent as possible, so. The northern half of this property makes most sense for us, it's actually the highest point in the city of Nisswa, conveniently next to a water park. But, uh, the southern portion is still, as of right now, not in the target of the city of Nisswa, so this path by Mr. Mills, I think is his own.
Is it the whole northern parcel? That the, is the city proposal?
Is it the entire northern half?
It is neither one of these two parcels. It is, yeah, it's not either one of these, it's, it's, it's north of these parcels.
All.
Yes.
At the intersection, well, close to the intersection of Highway 371 and County Road 77, south to where the entrance to where that flea market you were mentioning is at, so essentially, that's
Not part of the.
60, 71 acres?
Correct.
71.8 acres?
So.
Chris?
Yeah, about that.
Yep.
I'd be happy to bring up the map. Give me one moment. So if you, if you know where Sportland Bay is, so south of that, north of that, and then to the west.
Hi, Mary Jutland. I live on Old Government Trail, seasonal resident, but involved up here. Um, first of all, I commend the city for their forward-thinking approach to long-term infrastructure, because I think historically, it's kind of been a Band-Aid approach. Um, and so I wanna go on record saying, I think that's great. I think the use of city infrastructure at that corner is wonderful, because it's a low-density activity, um, as opposed to a Cabela's or Pubianian Land or something of that nature. Um, if you're talking about, you know, water tower lift systems and, you know, whether it's a hockey rink or something, it's, you're not talking about high density. So I think that that's good. I think we, I think we all support that. Um, and the improvements to Nisswa's infrastructure. Um, I, I do wanna go on record personally about the safety. Um, I observed the immediate aftermath of the fatal accident on Memorial Day. My husband was rear-ended at the intersection of 77 and 371 within the last 10 days. And the same day, I observed a car accident right in front of me with a young Schaefer's employee crossing from Stonewood, the bank, over to Schaefer's. And I don't think she could see, because cars were backed up crossing 371. And that was a bad accident, but they just hit in a way that wasn't as bad as it could have been. But, um, you know, I, I think we have all talked about, um, our concerns, and to the degree that as neighbors, we can be helpful to the city, whether it's petitions or information with MinDOT, um, we are happy to do that, and to be a voice of neighbors with this. And then, just as it relates to, you know, future development, yes, this property all sits next to 371, and it's highway, but it also sits next to lake property. And so there's both. And I feel like so much of the conversation has been focused on Highway 371, but the backside of it is lake property, that you're happy to tax us a lot of money for. So, that was my comments.
Thank you. I live right across the bay from, if all of you live on Old Government Trail, I live right across the bay from you all. I'm four or five houses down from Home and Point. I understand the same concept that you guys go through on a daily basis, getting in and out of their tall timbers, it's really no different. But going down through the, 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 what is that road even called, where the culverts at, um, bike trail, we'll call it. And going down to your neck of the woods there, it's, it's a beautifully preserved area, and I acknowledge that fully, but I think we, again, I'll reiterate, we've seen But I think we, again, I'll reiterate, we've seen the demographic change in this area. You see Baxter, the development boom there. I don't want you to think that the city is trying to open the floodgates for complete turnkey development. It's the same notion of trying to preserve this area as well as prohibit growth, but it's modest. And Bethany and Jenny and the rest of this commission, they do their job as diligently as possible, try to protect what you all invest in, that you pay high taxes in, and thank Crow and County for a bulk of it, not just us. But on that notion, I want you all to understand, I feel your pain too. I want to be able to see this area, try to be preserved as long as possible. That storm in twenty fifteen, we still have open fields down Tall Timbers, my parents' property and my own now too. So I think, I think all of your concerns are definitely heard and are not forgotten through the process of even a highway development project like this. So safety is of the highest concern right now, especially because it's at everybody's top of mind. So again, please note that this is a recommendation. Whatever decision the committee makes, it will then go to the council and the rest of my city council members in two weeks' time. So your voice can again be heard there.
The same process would have to be followed, but there are no time limits. So there's no, like, if once it's rezoned, you have to wait, there's no waiting period. So if somebody were to purchase the property, they are allowed to rezone, much like anyone else.
You know, from what I see on the property and you look at the contours back in this piece, especially the south piece, it's gonna be very difficult to develop that piece of property because of the drainage problems and the slopes and the wetlands. But just because something is zoned, if it's rezoned highway business, somebody wanted to come in there and still build multifamily or townhomes or something, and that still could be done. Is that correct? You can back.
Let me.
I don't think that this rezoning would preclude that type of use.
In highway business, you could do. You could do dwellings, triplex and quad residential and a PUD. You can do dwelling units above, so for commercial use, you can do that. Single-family residential homes would be prohibited, though.
Which would that, I mean, I guess it'd be requests for rezoning if that, it'd be going the other direction, but that could happen too.
Would that be rezoning or a variance?
Well.
Rezoning.
Yeah, for a house, for houses.
Not an ideal place for single-family homes. But, you know, could be rezoned again and.
Yep, planned unit developments, mixed use isn't allowed use with a conditional use permit. Yep.
So it doesn't preclude a lot of the other present, you know, development that could happen in there, so.
I'd also note that in comparison to some of the other cities in the area like Brainerd and Baxter, Nisswa has a very strict zoning ordinance. And then if somebody were to come through the process, we can, if your concern is buffer strips as a committee, we can have that a condition. Like if they say this, well, we want you to do this, this, and this. And in terms of wetland, whenever you do anything with wetlands, it has to be delineated by a state delineator. So they'll come in and they'll flag where the wetland delineation is to make sure it's protected. So especially with commercial property, then we have to do SWIP plans where we're, we're, we're making sure where all the water runoff is going. So it's, it's a very complicated process if somebody were to come forward with a plan. It's not just, oh, it's commercial, put it in whatever you want. That's not how it works. So.
And there are buffer requirements, to speak to your point. There are buffer requirements for any commercial, especially when there's commercial next to residential. There are heightened buffer requirements, either through vegetation or fencing or, or something.
Is it correct that any development is, there's conditions you have to, you put, like in Baxter, for example, if it's an allowed use, you can just do it. But in Nisswa, if I'm correct.
Depends on the application, depends on what's being proposed. But anything that would be, has a potential to be conditioned, that's a very fairly standard.
More, yeah, that's been my, my experience has been most every development, which gives the city a lot more leeway and ability to work with residents. They won't just, they'll find that compromise at that time.
I mean, just an example to throw at, in the past, we've had people that wanted to build apartments. And it's not that we don't want apartments, but we have a height ordinance. And for them to get above a second story to get cash flow off a third floor, they can't do it. So then it went somewhere else. So that's just an example. Right, do we have any other questions for Chris? No. So I guess the, I think we hit on a lot of the concerns that we were talking about. Is there any, Chris, is there anything you wanted to add?
I think, I think you all did a good job of explaining it. Hopefully, everyone understands that it all comes down to the comfort level over the city, which you want to do. Did Val or even Tom will say?
Yeah. Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, comments, I'll consider a motion.
I would move that we recommend to the mayor and city council approval of zoning map amendment application zero thirteen dash twenty-four from, to highway, from urban residential, you are present to highway business HB zoning.
Carrie, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? I, all those opposed, motion carries. All right, next item is variance application zero one four dash two four to obtain setback variances for the expansion of an existing deck, the construction of a screen porch, and for the placement of a storage shed. The subject property is located at two five four one eight Roy Lane, PID two eight one zero zero five five nine. Applicant owner Dean and Gail Froelich.
I just didn't understand.
You're losing your audience, I'm sorry. What's the deal?
They're all here to learn about the deck. So I'm Dean Froelich, as I said, two five four one eight Roy Lane. I have.
Hold on, hold on. Bethany, your staff report on that.
Thank you. Variance fourteen twenty-four, Dean and Gail Froelich are requesting a variance to expand on a legal existing non-conforming deck. An expansion that also includes a screen porch under the existing deck, variance from the structure setback for a seven-foot setback where ten feet is required to bring the property into compliance for the existing non-conforming deck. And then a variance from other setbacks for a two-foot structure to structure setback where ten feet is required for the placement of a ten-by-fourteen-foot storage shed.
Okay. Name, address, and then kind of give us a brief overview of what you're putting in here.
So Dean Froelich, two five four one eight Roy Lane, Nisswa. What else did you say?
Just a brief, what, what you're planning, what your plans are.
All right, as she said, I mean, she's kind of, Bethany is basically delineated what we're trying to accomplish here. We've been residents at our place on Roy Lane for almost twenty-one years and kind of gradually seen the decline of the existing decks that we have. So it's time to replace them. And as it sits, property as, as described is legal but non-conforming. And we would just like to make these changes so that we can better enjoy the property, I guess, and, and try to make use of it, even though it's not placed ideally on the, the house isn't placed ideally on the property according to the current survey. So we would like to expand the deck slightly across the front by two feet on the lakeside so that we can have a total of four feet in width across one area so we can get totally around the whole place, which would allow potentially for wheelchair use for our family or hopefully not self at some point, but you never know. We'd like to add a screen porch underneath the deck, a portion of it on the existing paver patio surface. And then as long as we were in this process, felt that we could use a little bit more storage in our garage space. So that's why we're requesting this variance for the setback for our storage shed right next to the existing garage.
I'm assuming we have no one here that would like to make public comment? No, okay. All right, do we have any questions for him?
I've got just a couple of comments. And I was out and visited the site and met with your wife the other day, a couple of days ago. And it just happened to be, the improvements that I see are necessary. You know, your, your, your decking and your, your log retaining walls are starting to.
Yep.
Go, so I mean, those things have to be replaced. So I have no problem at all with any of the, what you're improving or what you're proposing. I know there's always a consideration of drainage for these sites when you're doing something. And the day I was out there was just the day after that gully washer, the night before of the, you know, I mean, it really rained. And you could see that there's a pretty, it's, it's very steep going from your house down to the lake.
Right.
You know, there's, you'd think that there'd be erosion going down that hill, but there's not that I could see.
Right.
And it looks to me like all of the, the water that comes in your driveway is about halfway in your driveway. It's kind of humps like this, so then it drains to the lake and then drains back to the road. The water that's coming down your driveway apparently looks to me like it hits those boulders that you've got in between the driveway and the, in the house there.
Correct.
And that water splashes or drains over that, and it looks like a puddle that pools in the backyard before it drains out. So I was kind of surprised that, that, that you're grade going down to the lake from the house. There was, there was no sign of erosion at all. So I, you know, looking at, I don't know if we require water management plan for this, for what he's doing or not, but I.
The existing impervious percentage on this property does require not only a stormwater plant or stormwater plan, but also stormwater plan with buffer. So we've been working together. He's already submitted his stormwater management plan. He even sent me a picture of what you described.
Okay.
And so we've been working with that. I do have to say, and I would like to say for the record, that he has a wonderful shoreline. They, you talked about the lack of erosion. They have maintained a very excellent shoreline and a steep slope with proper vegetation and minimal change to their shoreline.
I was surprised you even had any grass left after that rain than the night before, because it was really horrible, but.
There's a lot of creeping Charlie.
Yeah. But just my comments on, on the site visit, so.
Any other questions? Okay, so as a part of a variance application, I have to go through these separate questions that we answer as a group. And then we'll, we'll follow along here.
You can lump all the requests, there are four. You can lump all of them together if you want. Otherwise, you'll need to go through them however you wish. You can put two and two together, or you can do whatever you wish.
I think we can lump them.
Okay.
All right. Is the variance in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance and comprehensive plan? The applicant answered, yes, all the proposals are consistent with the single-family residence on a single-family residential lot. I would agree.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Is the property owner proposing to use a property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the city of Nisswa Code of Ordinances? Yes, the deck side, the deck on the side yard serves as a main entrance to the home, reducing the size of the current deck creates a hardship and is impractical. Moving the sidewalk closer to the existing autumn blaze maple would risk damage to the healthy tree. The least obtrusive and most logical location to place a ten-by-fourteen shed is on the north side of the existing garage. The best and most logical location for a screen porch is below the deck on the east side of home using the existing paver surface. I would agree because you're not adding to any impervious coverage as well, so. Do we all agree with that?
Agree.
Yes?
Very good comments.
Yes. Three is a need for the variance due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the property owner. Applicant answered, yes, the existing structure, home deck sidewalk, is legal non-conforming property. The deck and sidewalks are rotting and need to be replaced for safety concerns. Since the existing decks and dwelling are within the setback, an only way to replace them is with a variance. Parcel is regularly shaped. And the home was not originally placed in an ideal location in respect to the lot layout as currently surveyed. And I'd also like to add that you would be improving a lot of the drainage concerns as well with your, with your plan. So I would say that was a plus two. Do we agree with that?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? There is no practical impact to the neighbors or the neighborhood. The area is zoned residential with single-family lakes for housing. The proposed changes are consistent with existing properties in the area, which have decks, sidewalks, and sheds. And I would also add that you're improving the look and the feel of your home and with the additions. And so it should be a net positive for the area neighborhood. Do we agree with that?
Curious.
Yes. Okay. Number five, does the need for the variance involve more than economic considerations? The area already has an existing debt. We want to increase our enjoyment of the lakeside deck and use it appropriately for the setting. The changes will allow for wheelchair access to the lakeside deck if needed for family or personal. Structure was built when setbacks were different than currently are allowed and dwelling was not placed on the property in an optimal location to meet the current requirements and needs. Screen porch variance request, create a bug-free zone to enjoy Minnesota. I would hardly agree with that one. Mosquitoes have not been good this year. But yes, I would say it's, it's safety considerations as well, as well as economic. So do we agree with that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Any other pertinent findings that we can add?
No.
I was out there too, and everything seems to make sense to what he's.
Okay.
Doing so.
Do we need to make any specific questions regarding the specific, the four different things? Or do you think we covered that?
Sorry, you can just make the motion based on the four variance requests. If you go through them and the requests are written under the application information right here.
Whoever wants to make that motion, do you have that in front of them?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve the variance application zero one four dash two four to obtain setback for expansion of existing deck, construction of the screen porch, and for the placement of a storage shed. On the subject property located at two five four one eight Roy Lane. According to facts and findings, staff.
There you go.
Amazing.
And the variance for the existing non-conforming deck to bring that into.
Yes, and that too. Didn't see that in here.
Second motion.
First and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all was opposed, motion carries. Good luck in project.
All right, thank you very much. It's a long process, but it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
The surveys provide some surprises in life too, don't they?
Unfortunately, yes. That was definitely a surprise, both to myself and our neighbor. So, but we'll figure it out.
Thank you. Next item, conditional use permit application zero one five dash two four to obtain a conditional use permit for the operation of a restaurant within the highway business zoning district. The subject property is located at two three eight three six Smiley Road, PID two eight two eight two three zero five zero nine. Applicant Roundhouse Brewery, owner Conductor Holdings LLC.
My name is Mark Lewica, and I am co-owner of Roundhouse Brewery. Hopefully, these decisions get easier as the night goes on, right?
Thank you. Bethany, your staff report.
Thank you. Conditional use permit application fifteen twenty-four. Roundhouse Brewery is looking and seeking an after-the-fact conditional use permit for the operation of a restaurant. They have been operating a restaurant for a while. They were not aware that they needed to update their CUP. They acted in good faith and required, or obtained all necessary state requirements. They were just unaware that they needed to take this step as well. Once they were notified, they have provided this information in the application, and they are here to seek that after-the-fact CUP tonight.
Pretty straightforward.
So what, what, what restaurant business do you have there?
We, so we built, we, when we bought the brewery in two thousand twenty, there was not a kitchen in it. And in two thousand twenty-one, we commenced a building project with kitchen. We used Norson. They came in, built us a commercial kitchen, which we have been operating since Memorial Day of twenty-two. And so that provides food for taproom customers as well as we have a private event center that it can provide food for as well.
Good. Do we have any questions?
I assume when the city has its new GIS system and everything all up to date, why these things, people will be reminded that they need to have renewals. So.
That's the goal. Yes.
Yeah, we went through the process, you know, we used the contractor. I mean, the permits were filed, everything was, was done. Just a miss on my part, I guess. I leaned too much on my contractor, but shame on me. That's why I'm here.
Well, good. We're glad that you came in to correct it. So I think we're all supportive. So sounds good. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, make a motion to approve conditional use permit application zero one five dash two four to obtain a conditional use permit for the operation of a restaurant within the highway business zoning district. Subject property is located at two three eight three six Smiley Road. Applicant Roundhouse Brewery owner is Conductor Holdings LLC.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on. New business none, old business none, city planners report.
Thirteen permits were approved, but the end date on that was the 24th of June. So there have been several more that have been approved since then. And there's a full bunch I'll be approving on Thursday as well. So things are picking up. I know that where we were at that point was where we were last year at the end of July. So there have been more permits. I don't think they're as large and as involved, but we do have more activity this year than last year.
Is it more new construction or remodeling or is it?
Remodeling, additions, decks, chicken coops, new septic systems. All good stuff.
Me in about two months, maybe. My wife finally stopped redesigning the house.
Okay.
For the 18th time.
You get it to a why not list when you're doing that eventually. So why not?
I get to, uh, I'm not going to that next meeting.
Change the parcel in between.
Yeah. And we changed the parcels. We're not on Mission Row anymore. We're going to be back into Tall Timbers Trail.
So it's very exciting. So.
Yes. We're excited.
I'm curious, how much the chicken, have, have there been lots of requests for that? How many have, have there been?
I think I've issued between four or five chicken coop permits.
Good educational thing, if nothing else.
I think so. Yeah, I'm, I'm hopeful. I know other area cities are doing the same thing too. Just people like to have the option to have chickens. And it's, it's great until it's a problem, I suppose. And, um, you know, that's why we have those performance standards and so that, you know, that we're all playing the same rules.
Yeah.
Yep.
People that have had chickens for years at some places, are they grandfathered in? So they don't, are changing our ordinances or?
No.
They're not required to upgrade to current standards or?
For anybody that would have chickens in Nisswa right now, they would be in OSR, which is Open Space Residential. They're allowed to have a lot of chickens. They can have a lot more chickens. They can have animals and animal husbandry. Agricultural activities can happen on those parcels. So.
Animals, elephants, whatever they want.
You know, our ordinance doesn't speak to it, so I suppose.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Very none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed, motion carried. We are adjourned.
Thank you.